...fifteen and eighteen for discussion at a later time. I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent calendar of all the items except for items number thirteen, fifteen, and eighteen.
To move second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No? All in favor? So we will take up items thirteen, fifteen, and eighteen after our regular agenda. So we have no public hearings. Our regular agenda is the strategic planning for our parcel tax renewal. Item number twenty-two, report from City Manager George Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As I said, this one's going to be short, just for the purposes of my voice. You have the staff report. You know that the parcel tax is going to expire in June of 2014. The report indicates how that's divided, sixty forty. Most of that goes to frontline law enforcement. The town's general fund operating budget, twelve thirteen, excluding capital projects, total about ten point eight million, and this is offset by revenues of about eleven point three, including the allocation of one point one from the parcel tax to police services. And as the report notes, without the parcel tax, the town could face a significant structural deficit in both the provision of police services and the maintenance of capital infrastructure. What staff is suggesting in the report is, I've heard comments from members of the council of the community, that they would like the councils to evaluate other alternative revenue strategies such as a real estate transfer tax, or a utility tax, or some other revenue strategy. Now, staff doesn't have the time or resources, and in some cases, the ability to go out and do that and still maintain all of our other priorities. So I recommend that maybe the council consider bringing in a consultant to assist, like the Lou Edwards Group, and you've got some information from them. They're just a representative firm out there, one of the best in the industry. But also, a component of that, that the council has done in the past, whenever we pursue the parcel tax renewal, is a polling firm to come in and assist with getting some feedback from the community. The polling portion of this would be about fifteen to twenty thousand. If we brought in a consultant to do some additional review for us and help us put some information and material education of the community, that's another forty thousand. In discussing this offline with staff and others, it would, well, one of the things we could do is, in the present year going forward, we could just do the polling component, because we're kind of under the gun with respect to parcel taxes coming around. So just look at the polling component to it, bring in a firm like Dobby or others, like we've done in the past, to assist us with that. And then in the off-year, evaluate some alternative revenue strategies, so we're not under the gun and we're not confusing the public with competing potential revenue strategies that we might be evaluating in the upcoming municipal election that the council might be setting in the near future. So that's the staff report. It's just up for council discussion. There's no real recommendation this evening, but you will be considering in the near future putting the parcel tax on the agenda for November of twenty thirteen.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any clarifying questions for City Manager or staff? And then we'll open it up to the public for their comments, and we'll bring them back to council. Okay. Any member of the public have any comments at this time regarding item number twenty-two? Yes?
Greg Condon, forty-three, Virginia. I'm not sure what the process has been in the past, because I wasn't on the Finance Committee, but I would hope there'd be a role here for the Finance Committee to come to some preliminary decision before the board does. So, but I'm not sure that's appropriate based on past procedure, but that's what I would recommend.
Thank you. Any other member of the public would like to speak on this item number twenty-two regarding strategic planning for the parcel tax renewal? I'll bring you back to council. Councilmember Dobby, you indicated you wanted to speak.
Yes. You know, we've talked about alternative revenue sources for a long time here. We've talked about changing the town to a charter city, so we can put a real estate transfer tax. I've pushed very hard to get a road impact fee, which probably would take a vote, the people, but would bring in up to a million dollars. And it seems to me that our priorities are wrong. We should be looking at those. I mean, on the agenda today, we've got an item on weddings in the park, and all of a sudden, that seems to have taken precedence over some of these other revenue sources. There are other revenue sources here, serious revenue sources. I calculated in nineteen, in two thousand and eight, that if we had a half percent real estate transfer tax, it would bring two and a half million dollars into the town. Now, we can't do that unless we're a charter city, but the road impact fee, one year brought in one point eight million, and the next year brought in a million. And we, against my advice, we rescinded that road impact. These are two major, major items for bringing in money to this town. And so, you know, for the City Manager to say, "We don't have time to do anything about bringing in that kind of revenue," bothers me a lot, frankly.
Any other councilmembers like to speak?
Yeah. I feel, I feel, you know, we may need to go out and bring in, you know, an organization to do a polling, or even help with getting the facts out. I'm not saying we should or we shouldn't. But I'm not sure, really, where we are financially, if, you know, do we need a parcel tax continuance? If so, do we need it for four years, or just two years? Do we need it at a certain level or not? I'd like to see an agenda item for us to actually discuss it, and discuss, as Councilmember Dobby said, other revenue sources, other than just de facto, "We've already got this coming in, let's just continue it, because it's, we're on a roll." I realize we've had the parcel tax for a long period of time, and the way we're allocating it is fine. You know, it took a couple, couple of years to us to get to the firm, cutting down of how we were going to spend it. But, I mean, there are things that if we were to move forward with a parcel tax, or continuance on the parcel tax, then I would want to say, "Well, let's pay down some, use it for paying down some of our long-term liabilities. Let's allocate it to that, our off-balance-sheet liabilities." So I think, you know, for the rest of the council members, and for the city staff, you know, I'm not prepared to say we need to continue it, or we don't. But what I am saying is, we haven't had a real healthy discussion on it, and really discussed it in detail. And I would like to see that as an agenda item coming up in the future, where we actually really discuss this and have the facts out. Thank you.
Any other councilmember? Councilmember Lees?
Thank you. Well, this is my first swing at the tax measure, so I'm going to come from, I think, a little bit different perspective, maybe than my colleagues. But I kind of think that polling our residents, as we often heard during the past processes that we've had, and historically, we're polling and we're looking for a desired result. And how we ask the questions to our residents is often how we sway the results. Do I think that that's beneficial to me? No. As a taxpayer, I get disappointed if you're looking for a desired result. So to spend twenty thousand dollars on a polling doesn't sit well with me. But on the other hand, I look at the fact that we have staff that is shorthanded, and I think that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of Atherton to inform them of what we do with the funds that we do ask for from the residents of Atherton. So I think that maybe a little different approach might be to relook at what we've done for the last four years, report out to the residents, hire a person to assist us in this, have the department heads that we have, the police chief, the public works director, say, "This is what we've done, and this is what we do for you, and this is how we're spending your money that we're asking for." I think that that is more transparent. It shows that we have a desire to make our services better. We have a goal. If we're asking you for money, we have a goal, each department, it's town manager, we have a goal. There's a need, but we also have a responsibility to prove that we utilize those funds we're asking for in a manner that goes to the services that they're expecting. And I think that in this process, we should also explore, while we're informing residents, what can we do better, and ask them questions, so that we can get feedback, so if we do go towards a parcel tax in November next year, that we're providing the services at a form of excellence that they're expecting. And then, again, with those questions, asking, "Do you feel that you're getting what you are asking for in these services, for this cost? Do you feel you're paying enough? Are there other needs that you think that we could help provide?" I think that it's just a different glance at it, but yet trying to be a little bit more transparent. And if we're going to ask, let's show them this is what we're doing.
Council, Vice Mayor Carlson?
Well, I think on a practical standpoint, you're suggesting by focusing on the parcel taxes, probably we'll end up, we'll probably end up going, just out of necessity, because I think that there are just a lot of, a lot of reasons, I think, that why alternative financing sources are just going to take a longer time to think through, implement, and so forth. In April, the Finance Committee is supposed to be getting a five-year, long-range plan And important information is going to be the unfunded liabilities.
The actuarial, right.
Some new numbers that, you know, our balance sheet doesn't reflect all of our long-term liabilities. And so, we really need to have a much better, transparent picture for not only ourselves, but all of our residents, in terms of where we stand from a long-term financing standpoint. Please, councilmembers.
Yes.
I hear you. I'm listening.
Disrespectful.
I think, so I think we're about a month early here, really, in looking at this question. But in the meantime, maybe we get some more cost information. And so, I think we need more numbers and more data like that. If we were to do such and such, you know, what would, is it twenty thousand, fifteen thousand? I just, I don't want to do anything tonight. I'll consider it. That's as far as I'll go.
Right. I think that's all we're asking, that he's asking. I think that the town needs to look at all financing and revenue enhancements that they can have at their disposal. I know that when we went for the renewal of the parcel tax in two thousand and nine, we were saying exactly the same thing. "Well, what about a UUT?" In fact, at that time, we had one of our residents who is an authority on utility users' tax. He came and addressed the council about, you know, the procedures, and how it might work, and things like that. And in fact, one of the Environmental Programs Committee members had indicated we could make it a conservative, a conservation UUT, such that with the intent of having the higher utility users be taxed at a higher rate, and then, you know, bring their usage down so that they wouldn't pay. So it would be kind of a declining amount of tax being collected, but it would also be saving the environment. But we got our backs against the wall at that time, too. In two thousand and nine, we said, you know, the renewal of the parcel tax is really our best shot, and so then maybe we'll look at it in 2010, all the other revenue enhancements. And then, 2010, of course, came, and we had different people on council, and it just kind of got lost in the shuffle. So I think that, and I think we had a different city, county, city manager. So I do believe that we need to take time to investigate a UUT, as Councilmember Dobby has always said, a real estate transfer tax, you know, poll the residents, see what, because it does have to get passed by a two-thirds vote. Now, with a charter city, it would only be a fifty percent. Any tax has to be a two-thirds vote approval, right?
With a charter city.
It's fifty percent.
No.
Real estate transfer tax, it has to be a charter city.
Some taxes can only be by a charter city. But any tax under, under the state law, if it's for a general purpose.
General purpose tax.
It's fifty percent plus one vote. If it's for a specific purpose, then it, like, for instance, for police services.
Right.
Then it requires a two-thirds.
Okay. And that's what our parcel tax has always been. It's been for police services, and road maintenance, and drainage, you know, capital improvements. And that's, it's been in place for, since nineteen seventy-eight. It was originally started as a police tax to support our police, because our property tax revenue was being capped because of Prop. thirteen, and it's been renewed every four years since then. It failed in two thousand and four, and I was on the committee to have to go out in the spring of two thousand and five with a group of residents to go door-to-door and educate the people. And they said, "Oh, yeah, sure, you know, of course." It just had not been promoted in two thousand and four by the council. Two thousand and nine, members of this council were on the resident committee to support it and to campaign to get it voted in, and it was approved by more than two-thirds majority. So, and it is specific to the police services and to the road maintenance. So I do believe that we need to poll the residents. I don't believe we need a consultant at this time, like the Lou Edwards Group, to manage the process. We have resident, if, when we agree to put it on the ballot, a resident group, not a council-formed group, will then take on the responsibility of creating the campaign for the parcel tax renewal. And I know that we have members of the public that are very passionate about that. So I think that what we want to do in this agenda item here is just to take it, the recommendation is just to consider it. We need to bring back to council at a future date, or in a workshop, other options for revenue enhancements, and to evaluate those. So there's no other action that needs to be taken at this time. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would also like to point out, if we were a charter, charter city rather than a general law city, we could also save money on all of our contracts, which is something people probably don't realize.
So we have an ad hoc committee that has been formed to research the charter city, right? And so I'm hoping that that ad hoc committee will come back with a report to council at some soon date.
At the appropriate time.
At soon.
At the appropriate time.
I hope so, too.
Sooner rather than later.
The ad hoc committee did meet just the other day, and the process is moving on.
Okay. So the process is moving along. Okay.
Madam Mayor, perhaps I could summarize some general direction that staffs heard this evening, is we could come back in April, the April council meeting, separating out the Lou Edwards stuff, maybe get a couple of other proposals to do that same or similar thing for us, narrowing the focus to investigating alternative revenue strategies that they could bring back at a workshop with the council. And then separate out proposals for a survey component that would be strictly dedicated to the parcel tax. Theresa, the parcel tax has to be voted on, put it on the November ballot in June?
Yes.
So that's the date that the council has to decide whether or not to put it on, on the ballot for November. So we've got some time to discuss and make a decision or so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is that agreeable? Did he summarize correctly? Do I have any?
And I would just say that we probably could also form some project committees, or I certainly would be happy to work on a project where specifically, where we're looking at what we needed to do to become a charter city.
We're doing that.
But you're on the ad hoc committee, sir.
No, I'm not. It's Jerry and I.
Oh, sorry.
Bill and Jess.
I'm just a little bit concerned by the delays that we've had for the last three years.
We need to nudge our fellow ad hoc committee.
Well, Madam Mayor, I don't think it's a secret that the subcommittee, we have actually looked at a number of city charters. We have, I drafted a, kind of a draft of a, at least the bones of a charter, and right now, the subcommittee is looking at that to see if that's the right direction, or if we've got things in it we need more of or less of. But right now, I'd say it's probably an eighty percent document, if not more.
But I, my thought, my understanding of the ad hoc committee is going to bring back to council for discussion and evaluation, pros and cons, not a, not a document. That was what the direction was.
Pros and cons be part of the package.
Part of the package.
That was prepared early on. Yeah, that was prepared early on by the city attorney.
But we haven't gone there.
Well.
But what we've done is, we've looked at, Bill's been kind enough to pull together a number of charters from lots of different cities, long ones, short ones, et cetera. And we went through and identified things that we thought were good, what we didn't think was good. Bill has then also balanced those things against the, our ordinances, and, you know, trying to draft alternatives and things like that, such that we can come back to the council and also to a public meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, okay, that's, let's move on to item number twenty-three, approval of the Civic Center Master Plan RFP. Mike, Community Services Director, please get the report. Thank you.
Mayor Lewis, members of the city council. Per council direction, staff prepared the required proposal that is part of your report this evening. Prior to this bringing the final RFP to you, we had a final draft, which was shared with Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Dobby, who had a number of very helpful comments, which were incorporated and reflected in the draft as before you this evening. Once approved by the city council, the RFP will be posted on the town's website, as well as industry websites, to solicit proposals from architects and inland planners. Per the schedule, that's part of the report. The proposals will be due on April eighteenth. And once received, proposals will be reviewed and ranked by a committee consisting of Civic Center advisory committee members, as well as staff. And it's anticipated that we would be coming back to council with a recommendation for consultant selection at your June city council meeting.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any clarifying questions at this point, before I open up to public comment?
Well, I can do it anytime, but as Mike has mentioned, I met with City Manager Mr. Seaver here, and I asked him to make some changes, which some of them, some of them put in.
Councilmember, can I just have you wait on that for a second, and we'll just, we'll go ahead and ask public comment. Okay. Thank you. Any members of the public would like to speak on this RFP? Thank you. Seeing none, let's go ahead.
Okay. One of the things, these are just clarifying, but the overview provisions, I, let me see if you can change this or not. And what you say is, "The current site is the location to be used for the Civic Center." Well, you know, we have quite a bit of land here around the town, and I don't want the people to think that we have to build the new community center where the present administrative building is. In other words, we've got quite a bit of land behind that. We've got land, I think somebody said we're four and a half acres here. I think all of that land should be available for the master plan to look at. I'm not saying what it should be, but I just don't want to get them thinking, it's got to be, we've got the bulldozers, the present administrative building, and putting the new one up in the same place. Maybe they don't think that, but that's my, was my impression. That's why I asked you to change it.
Should we say then, in that particular, since we're going to wordsmith this as we go along?
Yeah.
The current site, consisting of four point five acres, is the location to be used?
I think as a town, I think you would say as.
Specifically outlined in section three.
As, yeah, as.
Because section three does include all those things that Jim suggested, and I think if, if you reference, when it says "the current site" and outlined in section three, it does talk about all of the areas here.
Or just reference the pictures that are in the back, because you've got the layout of the two areas, and they're going to put it all together, and then that would, that would just say all the land is up for grabs, including you've identified the roads and the parking lots.
Okay.
My next item, and I don't know, I don't know if this is in, I don't think so, but I really think that we're not just looking for one master plan. You know, we want some alternatives, because when the citizens look at it, you know, we want to give them some ideas of, we can do this, we can do that, we can do the following. So I think we're looking for more than one master plan.
Councilmember Dobby, it is in item number B, number ten. It says, "Using input gathered by CCAC."
Oh, yeah. Okay, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they put that in.
Okay.
I'd ask for that. I'm sorry. Looking at my old document here.
Okay.
So let me see what else here. On number four, yeah, okay, I think that's right. And C, when we go to C, okay, they added that one, that's fine. Then when we go to, one of the things I want to put in here, which I mentioned but isn't in here, is, it seems to me that what we want, from whoever it is that we ask to do this, we want monthly or bimonthly progress reports. I do not want to get to the end of this, where they've spent all the money, and then people say to us, "My God, why didn't we catch that ahead of time? Why didn't we find out ahead of time before they spent all of it?"
Councilmember Dobby, it is in C, number one, conduct monthly meetings with town staff and CCAC, including preparation of the meeting agenda, updated scheduled project reports, and minutes of each meeting.
C, number one.
It's on page five of nine.
Yeah, page five.
And four.
And what?
C, four.
Oh, and, and C four, prepare monthly written progress reports.
Which one are you talking about? Five?
It's, it's under.
C one.
Actually, it's under four, scope of, four, scope of work. Maybe C, other services to be included.
One and four, it's back, address B.
Yeah, but that to me, I don't want to, well, I might cover it. I think I brought up before, when I did that. Okay. And then my next item is, on the, I don't think we should include the evaluation criteria. I brought this up before as well. I mean, if we use that to evaluate these proposals, that's one thing. I don't think we should tell the bidders how we're going to evaluate them. I think that's an internal thing to be doing, and unless there's some legitimate one to evaluate, but maybe, I would say that we should take that out. And then whoever on the council or in the committee is evaluating these proposals, we can use these if we want, but I don't think we should tell them how we're going to evaluate them.
Yeah, I think that's probably a problem. And here's why. Only for, for consultant services, for this type of service, legal services, engineers, you are allowed to select the best proposal. Well, based on what? What does that mean? And the reason that virtually every selection defers to something like this is so that the firms can come in and say, "Maybe I'm heavy in one area, I'm not heavy in another. I can understand how somebody beat me." But otherwise, we end up with endless lawsuits over, "What criteria did you use? It was a secret. You changed it at the meeting. We didn't know." And I think that, I don't care what criteria you use, or how you assign values, but I do want it to be public ahead of time, so that every firm coming in is playing on an even playing field, and they can't complain later on that we may, maybe change the rules.
So they wouldn't have to know the weighting, but just the categories?
Well, I think that you're asking, the more you change, this is the, this is the, this is the standard cookie cutter that's virtually in every RFP for selecting an architect or an engineer of this, of this kind of work. And if you, the more you take, change from that, the more you're inviting someone to see you for. change from that, the more you're inviting someone to see you for not being treated fairly. And I would only point out, how is somebody coming in after they're done and they leave, and suppose there's five firms, how are they going to know that when they were graded, they were all graded using the same allocation for each criteria? And the only way they would know that is if they knew going in, and they would have some way of kind of check-in, because they all know what each other's doing work-wise.
You could tell them that during the meeting, during the onsite meeting. I mean, I would think we're free to select anybody we like.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way legally, unfortunately. That's, you know, one of the, remember when you hired me, you said, "I should be proactive and cut down on lawsuits." This is proactive. And because it tells them upfront what the criteria are going to be. And you know what? If they don't measure up to the other firms, I mean, they can't manufacture experience. So they know going in that if they're up against somebody that's really big and they're not, that the other guy's probably going to get the job. And that's just the way it works.
I think this could create more lawsuits, in my mind.
In, in practice, in practice, it doesn't. But, I mean, the council's certainly free to select the, how you want to allocate the percentages. I have nothing to do with that. I just think that whatever you do, transparency is always a good thing.
Do you have any, excuse me, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Ruiz, do you have any comments on the RFP?
Yes, and thank you, Councilman Dobbie and Mayor Lewis, for getting us to this point and staff. Couple. One of the things that just jumps out at me is the square footage figures related to the library, second floor, so on. I would just like to see something that we verify the program numbers related to those areas, just so that we have some, you know, direction and actual size. I mentioned this to the town manager that I'd like to also see a ability that council can modify the scope of work. So that's something that...
Yeah, I mentioned that to Mike already, and I think he's going to include that within section five, submitted review process, a sentence that reads, "The town reserve to write to modify the scope of work with the selected vendor."
Thank you.
Good point.
Something else that I, I think that, and maybe I'm just looking at it, is maybe just getting a little bit more clarity. I would also, I would like to see staff work with the CAC group to set the agenda. So together to set the agenda, instead of just staff.
Yeah, I think that's, I brought it up as well, and I think that's in here.
I didn't. Okay. I didn't see it, so I apologize. If it's there, it's redundant.
Including, so it would be in, you're looking at item four, C, item number one, conduct meetings with town staff and CCAC, including working with staff for the preparation of...
To set the agenda.
To set the agenda, okay.
Yeah.
Including working, does that work? Working with staff in preparation of meeting agenda?
And the CCAC would follow the current rules and procedure that the council's already established for.
Okay.
Right. The other thing that I, I just think it's a little hole, but other council members may disagree. I think that the first meeting should be a little clearer, and the CCA group should meet with the planning commission and the chosen applicant as a public meeting, joint meeting, so that they can create the foundation for the input to move forward.
Or, are you?
I, it's just, it's something that I didn't see. I didn't see planning commission in here at all, and they are such a valuable commodity to the town. I would think that the first meeting launched would be with the CAC group with the planning commission, so joint, covered by the Brown Act, to get input as we move forward. So I think that that's something that we should, whoever we choose in this process, will be identified that that'd be the first step with us. Seth?
I'm going to think about that. The planning, our planning commission, and maybe I could ask staff to weigh in on why, what impact they might have or not have, because matters that usually come before the planning commission are not this, at this point. Lisa, do you have an opinion?
Well, first, I think the appropriate place to put that would be in the procedures for the CAC, as opposed to this RFP.
Right, okay. Good, good point.
But we haven't, we've done scoping meetings at the planning commission level to get public input, but we haven't really done kind of a, what do you think, master plan. I think it's more important to get the community input. But, I mean, we can certainly do that. We haven't done it in the past. And I haven't typically done that in other jurisdictions I've worked in, where we do more master planning than Atherton does. We haven't typically done it at that early stage. They usually like to see it at a later stage. There's usually more community workshop stages, very early on.
Yeah.
I think that's a good direction, though, is to include, or to ensure that the CCAC checks in with the planning commission at the very beginning, just to get some feedback on the project. Please do.
I just think it's healthy, and I, you know, with such experience sitting in the planning commission, it just seems.
So where would you put that in the?
Well, it wouldn't go within the RFP, as Lisa's intuendo. It would make sure that council's direction this evening is CCAC check in with the planning commission, and so we cut that.
And not in, not in the RFP. Because this RFP is just going to the potential consultant.
Madam Mayor, in the past, we generally have taken staff to the planning commission as a separate item, not with a joint council meeting. So I don't know.
I, I think it's not a joint council meeting. It's just the, yeah, the committee.
I, I would.
Maybe a committee representative or something.
Yeah, I would say, at least, that I've been on the planning commission for years. Generally speaking, we can consider these things, but the whole planning commission considers it after the council or the CACC says, please, please consider this.
Sure. Okay. We'll put it in the procedures of the CCAC.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. And I apologize, one more.
One more? Oh.
Sorry, I enjoyed the reading, but I maybe, and I think the last item, and I know this is something that my colleagues...